All right, like to call this regular board meeting to order. Call, join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Maravka here. Jones?
Here.
Sluse? Bowden?
Here.
Hamm?
Here.
And Sterba.
All right. So, next is the consent agenda, so this is something we talked about last time. The items on the consent agenda this time are the approval of the minutes from our last meeting and the payroll and accounts payable. Do any of the trustees want to remove one of those items from the consent agenda? If not, are there any questions on either one of those or comments?
One question. What's breakdown on the sales tax rebates?
On the cars?
Yeah. How many years are left on each?
Drale, I think, has three. Terry's four or five, and Earl, nine.
So, curious, it's more, why was the amount less? Less sales?
Based on sales.
Wow.
Plus, I think theirs went down.
Plus, they each have different formulas. They're all based on a different base also.
So, theirs started out like a bigger percentage the first few years, and as it went down, yeah. Any other questions? If not, a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion?
Second.
Moved by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee Jones.
Roll call.
Do we have to take roll call with the consent?
Yep.
Bowden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sluse? Maravka?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
And Sterba?
Yeah. I'm sorry, did that mention that on the payroll, the amounts of the payroll ending, six, twelve, twenty-one, forty-nine thousand, eighty-four dollars and fourteen cents, and accounts payable total, two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, seven-sixty-five-eighty. Public comment? Okay, no public comment, we go on to committee and staff reports, administrator report?
I just wanted to touch on some code issues for everybody out there. Remember, it's unlawful to park an inoperable or abandoned motor vehicle upon any street in the village. Also, it is unlawful to park any inoperable or abandoned motor vehicle openly upon private property or elsewhere in the village. So, just a reminder, want to try to give a reminder on code issues every time we meet.
Any questions for the administrator? Public Works report, there was a written report. Public Works director is out of town this week, but they said there was a written report in there for you. Any questions on that at all? Treasurers report, Marcy?
Everyone has a copy in their packet of the treasurer's report, just a little bit of some highlight there. You'll notice in MFT funds, we received sixty thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars in revenues. Thirteen thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-five of that is our normal MFT funds. The additional forty-five thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars was our fourth installment of the Rebuild Illinois Bond Grant. So, that'll be it for this year. We'll anticipate two more of those installments for next year. You'll also notice, under Vehicle Service Fund, we had revenues of twenty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety dollars. The two dollars and ninety cents were the interest, but the twenty-four thousand dollars was from the sale of the old water and sewer van that we still are hanging on to, we got rid of, since Public Works does not have the use for it. And then you'll also see, under the Business Development District Fund, the deposit of sixteen thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and twenty-one cents. That's the monthly deposit that we're averaging right now in that fund, so. Any other questions?
Thank you. Police chief report.
Really brief, just been watching the Weather Channel, and I hope our, remind residents also watching, Saturday we were, yeah, it was Saturday. I'm trying to remember what day it was. Saturday where I was in contact with Public Works in the event we needed them for any problems of what happened with the weather that was going on, and the people from me, Will County Emergency Management called me, making sure we were still alive. I said, "We're fine, just a little wet," and so that's about all I have to say today.
So, just to clarify, this comes up time to time, but, so the siren goes off when there's a tornado warning issued, and it can be turned on by our dispatchers at Leraway Road, correct?
That's right.
Or you can, you can call them to tell them to push the button, right?
Yeah.
And there's no all-clear signal anymore?
There's never been all-clear since I've been here.
No.
They don't set it off twice. It did go off twice Saturday because another front was coming through,
Right.
and when they set that off, they set it off for our region. When they set off ours, the first time it was just for Piattone. Then the second front came through and was heading towards Beecher and that, and then...
Correct.
But I was watching it and seeing that, and, you know, because the first warning really hit the, over in the Creed area, you know, that area way north of us was following that storm. Anybody has that on your phone, you have to keep it charged, because those alerts keep coming and coming. So, long as everything was safe, we didn't lose any trees, so I didn't have to bother erring.
Good. But I would just encourage residents, I mean, you know, have a weather radio, you know, have batteries, and if you hear a siren go off, you know, if the electricity's still on, you know, check your TV or check your phone or computer. Because like I said, there's no all-clear signal, so you kind of have to help yourself and see, you know, how long the warning is for, and, you know, so.
Well, if you're watching TV, you're gonna hear it, see it on the television.
Right, yeah.
Because they're gonna take over every show.
Yeah, so.
And it started movie several times when it got bad.
All right, thanks.
Real quick, Chief, the Troy Chevy Show with some overcame, just at your church. Do we bill them for that, or?
Yes, they paid all the fees.
Okay, cool.
Thank you. All right, Troy, engineer report.
Yeah, just got to update, the West Street reservicing project is supposed to start next week. They talked about starting this week, I don't know about scheduling and weather. They plan on starting, I believe, Tuesday next week now.
Anything else?
That's all.
Okay. All right. So, I've had a few comments. I wanted to thank the Icebox Creamy and the Police Department for a successful calling with the cop, a community event. We had quite a few residents come and talk with Officer Stankus and who was?
Kovar.
And Officer Kovar.
Nick.
Nick, yeah, and I hope they have those, you know, at least twice a year, you know, different businesses and stuff, and I thought it was a big success. Block Party was a big success, someone thanks to Julie, the Chamber, Public Works Department. Also, the Village Mantino, they always let us use their barricades and their stage. It was nice, our administrator, Amy, and Joe, our code enforcement officer, had a booth there. They had a lot of good interaction with the residents, so that's something that we'll want to continue in the future. Last Thursday, we had a productive taxing body meeting. We had representatives from school board, library, Park District, Will Township, Piattone Township, Will County, and the fairgrounds. It was nice just to kind of share information on what's going on with everybody. We plan to meet quarterly, next meeting is September 30th. AOC is going to have a meeting coming up here soon. We need to discuss holiday policy, you know, the governor's signed off on a couple of new holidays, so I just want to get ahead of that. And we're wrapping up liquor ordinance changes, and also I want to talk about changing to an appointed clerk instead of an elected clerk. Police Committee is going to meet coming up here soon. Also, there was resident concerns about Blue Devil Drive and some neighborhood vehicles, so I just want you guys to review those. Update on the Second Street Saloon. There is some asbestos in there that we need to do asbestos abatement before the demo. We did get some demolition bids. They came in much higher than we expected. The lowest was eighty-one thousand, the other one was over a hundred thousand. We'll kind of keep working on this. Public Works has been in there removing all the paraphernalia, signs, whatever, stuff that we're gonna, you know, try to auction off to raise a little money from that. And we also have requests for proposals out there for asbestos abatement, so we'll keep you guys informed on that. Railroad Street Parking, I had talked to Troy about coming up with an engineering agreement to design that, and also proposal to survey not only that area, but the whole downtown area, so we kind of know what we actually have down there as far as, you know, the streets and sewers and, you know, all that good stuff, so. Hopefully we'll hear from you on that soon. The IML Conference is coming up in September, September 23rd to 25th. That's the Illinois Municipal League. It's being held at the Conrad Hilton, obviously they skipped it last year. I would encourage, you know, trustees and the clerk to attend. They've got a lot of good seminars, you know, on everything that has to do with municipal government, and I've attended in the past, I've enjoyed it, I know trustee Jones has, and it's really worthwhile, if you get away, you know, just for one day to do that, I would encourage you to do that. Talk to our administrator, get signed up for that, set it something you want to do. And then, the Chamber's having a golf outing on Friday, August 20th, so if you're interested in that, please, you have to talk to Julie and get signed up for that. That's all I have for mayor's comments, any questions on any of those things?
On the demolition, there's no basement, right? We don't have to break out a lot of concrete or anything?
There's a little area, maybe a small space, but no basement.
But it's not concrete?
So, no, like excavation really, just... Seems awfully high.
I know. I don't know if the buildings are so close together, or, I don't know. If you guys have any ideas, let Amy know.
I know down in Wilford, they had to take a few buildings down, downtown, and they were attached.
Yeah.
I'd call down there and find out who did it. They're operating on no budget, I mean, just minimal.
Yeah.
And these were some pretty big structures, and they were masonry, and they've done a few of them, so.
Yeah, let Amy know. All right, on to old business, we have none, new business. Motion to approve change order on the South Second Street Drainage Project for Alberico Construction Company. Troy would like to...
Sure, so this is the second invoice. In this invoice, there's some of the work, the previous work, because it wasn't fully complete for the first invoice, and this invoice also obviously includes the extra charges for the existing thirty-six inch storm sewer not being in the place that it was expected to be in. The problem was, it's so deep, it's sixteen or eighteen feet deep, and it wasn't between, normally the sewer, you know, was a straight line between the two manholes. In this case, it was further north, almost going out into the property, so it was, it was a lot of extra digging, a whole extra day of equipment and labor. And then, all that comes with that is extra spoil removal, extra restoration, extra pipe to connect it, so that's where the extra work came in. We reviewed their bill. The first time around, I had some comments, and they lowered it. Other than that, we were in agreement with what they're showing. They did offer like the prompt pay discount of thirteen hundred dollars, because they realized it was a big extra, so that's where we're at.
Questions? We obtain a motion to approve that?
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Hamm, seconded by trustee Maravka.
Roll call vote. Hamm?
Yes.
Maravka?
Yes.
Sluse? Jones?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Sterba?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
All right, so next on the agenda is motion to award recommendation letter and bid tab for MFT Resurfacing Project for Wilson Street and North Street. So, Troy, you want to?
Yep, this is a MFT project this year. So, the bids were opened on June 21st, we had three bidders, Iroquois Gallagher and P.T. Barrow. The low bidder was Iroquois. They came in a decent amount under the estimate, our estimate was two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand. Got really good prices on this, which is good, because prices have been pretty high lately on a lot of construction projects, so we will, we recommend awarding to the low bidder.
Troy, how do you justify that big of a spread?
Iroquois is very close to Piattone, and I think that the third bidder wasn't really trying to get it. It seems like, just with the way you can see some of the prices are, but, um... Yeah, there's, there's not too many contractors who are competitive in Piattone. These are the three normally, so. I think one of them, or maybe two of them, were extremely busy, so didn't try as hard as they normally would have, but some lower prices online for it.
Just watch them, make sure they don't cut any corners to justify it.
We're definitely gonna have to do that.
I'm not sure she will move with the lowest bidder.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Then moved by trustee Maravka, seconded by trustee Hamm.
Roll call vote. Maravka?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Sluse? Jones?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Sterba?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
Next is a motion to approve the revised Village of Piattone organizational chart. Amy, do you want to discuss?
And I gave you a copy of the old one, the current one, I should say, versus this one. It's just a little bit different, nothing major, just, just slight difference in the presentation and reorganized, you know, building, some of the building under, or code under administration. We need an updated organizational chart to attach to our FOIA policy for online, so I was just kind of reviewing it. That's what prompted me to review it, so. I just looked at a couple different communities and how they organize theirs, and I thought this was a good representation of our organizational structure.
Any questions?
And I did run it by department heads, so to get their input, and any, any changes from that?
So, we're, we're taking out the residents of Piattone as like the top people that could... I don't understand why we're taking them out. Just, I mean, I, I kind of understand, but I don't understand, like...
I didn't consciously say I want to take them out, so I can put them back in, is a good...
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't really, I mean, this looks good, but I just, I don't understand, like...
Yeah, I can add that again.
Because I don't want them being like, oh, why don't we get taken back?
Yeah, they're the boss, so I'll have them back in.
Okay.
Any other questions?
That's right.
Okay, obtain a motion to approve that as amended.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, moved by trustee Maravka, seconded by trustee Bowden.
Roll call vote. Maravka?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Sluse? Sterba?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
All right, on to item D, ordinances. First one is ordinance annexing certain real property commonly known as 339 North Hurland Avenue to the Village of Piattone. This would be ordinance 2112. So, the three of these ordinances today have to do with annexing property that is completely encircled by the village right now, and we were just, we've discussed this in the past, and these are three properties that we wanted to go ahead with. This property is a house that's in between Terry's Ford and the gas station house.
And there's three on here, but we were talking about others too, right?
Well, we had, but the ones on Corning right now, we're holding off on. And then, the storage facility...
To be contiguous without Corning houses.
Yeah.
It would or would not?
It would not.
So, it wouldn't be encircled, so.
Why is that?
Like, there's several parcels to the south of the storage facility that are not annexed, they're still unincorporated, so it doesn't create, the village limits surrounding that property. Because even if, you know, we just have one parcel that's not annexed, you know, it kind of creates like a L shape. So, it's not contiguous.
So...
Or it's not surrounded, I should say.
That's a stipulation for surround, like 360?
For a, for a forced annexation? I mean, anyone can petition to annex into the village. There's like five or six different ways the properties can be annexed, but if you just want to go ahead here at the village board and do this, you have to have it completely surrounded.
Got it. So, there's some drainage issues out there that we're not sure we want to take on if we annex.
Okay.
So, that's kind of where we're at.
Okay, so this is just for that one house right now?
Yes.
I'll motion that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then moved by trustee Maravka, seconded by trustee Hamm, this will be ordinance 2112.
Roll call vote. Maravka?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Sterba?
Yes.
Sluse?
All right, next, item two, ordinance annexing certain real property commonly, commonly known as a parcel located on the north side of Wilmington-Piattone Road at Goldview Drive to the Village of Piattone. So, this is a little triangular section of property on the north side of Wilmington-Piattone Road, that again is completely surrounded by the village, but was never annexed in, so. This would be ordinance 2113.
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by trustee Hamm, seconded by trustee Jones.
Okay, roll call vote. Hamm?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sluse? Maravka?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Sterba?
Yes.
Uh, go ahead. Motion.
Motion carried.
Okay. Next, ordinance annexing certain real property commonly known as 6918 West Corning Avenue to the Village of Piattone. This is the house just to the west of the cemetery. And again, it's completely circled by the village.
Two thousand and six, we signed a paper under duress when they busted our field tile, and we went into the village sewer, so we've already been under that for that long. This is the home where the mayor's wife, Lilian Scribbins, was born, in the Old Meyer Farmhouse. All I can say is, we've held it, it's not as bad a condition as the barn. I have it, trying to empty it out and put it up for sale. So, I'd love to be annexed to the village. Does that mean that John's military pennant can be in the village?
Sure, yeah, of course you could.
All right, then, so just patience with me, I'd love for the police protection, yeah, he loves. Because I've been the guardian of the Eastern Gate of Piattone for thirty-three and a half years. So, I would love to be annexed in, but please be patient, it'll go as is.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there a motion, this would be ordinance 2114.
Motion.
Is there a second?
I have one question, so Corning is considered village, then? That's the southern boundary to the village?
Yeah. When we annexed the Hamm property to the east of the cemetery, where there was going to be a, you know, PUD, there was going to be a subdivision there back.
Got it.
So, that's when that all got pinned.
Okay.
You know, we even have Ridgeland Road there too is the village, so.
So, the roads are, okay.
Yeah, so. You can see the blue line around there.
Well, I saw that, but I didn't see it around the, the storage.
Well, you know, when we did this map, we were anticipating that we were going to annex those properties. So, I told the engineers just to square off the lines.
Okay.
But we're gonna have to take a magic marker and cut those out.
Got it.
Okay. All right, so if there was a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
So, moved by trustee Jones, seconded by trustee Hamm, this is ordinance 2114.
Okay, roll call vote. Jones?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Sluse? Bowden?
Yes.
Maravka?
No.
And Sterba?
No.
Okay, so we have three in favor and two against at that point, meaning the mayor isn't helping?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so that means the motion carried?
Yeah, four to two.
All right, next, ordinance amending various sections of chapter 155 vacant building of the village code of the Village of Piattone. We discussed this at the last meeting. So, there was a couple of changes that we were going to put in here. One was, we are going to require a, you know, a sign on the building, and the other one was basically kind of defining what authorized agent means, so it wouldn't get confused with a real estate agent.
What's your answer on this one?
This is ordinance 2115.
What exactly is the purpose of this?
So, it's just to have a, so that the village can have a database of, you know, who owns these buildings, what's vacant, so that if there are code violations that we can easily contact somebody, instead of just, nobody knows who owns the building, you know.
I was just thinking, I don't know how far you carry this, but if someone was renting a house, per se, and they were between tenants, would they have to go through this process?
Well, there's a procedure, I mean, it has to be vacant for a certain amount of time, you know, it's not just...
More of an abandoned type of thing.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I mean, we're not trying to, you know, mess up anybody's rental property. Yeah, I mean, we're not trying to, you know, mess up anybody's rental property. But yeah, I mean, if it's, it's mostly just to get it, figure it out who owns these abandoned buildings.
Motion to approve this.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Trustee Morevka, second by Trustee Bowden.
Okay, roll call vote, Morevka?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Sluse? Jones?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
And Sterba?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Item E is a resolution approving a settlement agreement between Iroquois Farms to, I'm sorry, did I miss one?
Yep.
Oh. I must have had it wrong. All right. Okay. Ordinance, so item five under ordinances, ordinance amending title fifteen, chapter one fifty, section one fifty point one one six, D five, in regard to the International Property Maintenance Code. This would be ordinance twenty-one sixteen. Do you want to take this one?
Yeah, so just, it's just, we're just kind of cleaning up the, the code right now. This is, we've adopted twenty fifteen International Property Maintenance Code. And there are sections in the code, chapters and sections, just like our code. And they change when you change or upgrade to a different maintenance code. And when, when we did that, we just, we just missed the weeds section. So we have to insert like the, the inches that we prefer the weeds to be, to enforce it. But the section that refers to weeds was not, did not match this booklet. And so that could cause a problem administratively down the road. We just wanted to make sure the section numbers match. So that's all this is, cleaning that one section number up. And.
What year does this, would this code bring us up to?
This is, this is twenty fifteen.
What were we operating on?
I don't know what you had before that.
You currently, you previously adopted twenty fifteen.
Yeah, you, you did.
This is just correcting a reference.
That's the previous, so.
Prior to two thousand and fifteen, I'm not sure what code you used.
It was pretty old. It was like five or eight. Tom Penkey recommended that we update the standards. We didn't want to go to the current ones because the current ones are somewhat overzealous.
Yeah.
But he said fifteen was a pretty good.
So in your packet, I gave you a list of all the codes that we adopted. And it would say the date on there when it was adopted.
I remember when we did that. What was the previous fellow's name that was our code?
Tom Penkey.
Tom Penkey.
Penkey?
Tom Penkey.
Oh, yeah, Tom. Because we, I think the building committee went through that with him, and we updated it, but that was twenty fifteen.
Yeah.
Wow.
I mean, that was, that's the code that you updated. I'm not sure what year it got updated.
Yeah, so that was just a couple of years ago that we updated.
Because we were operating like on.
Yeah, I said two thousand and five or seven, something like that, so. Okay. So yeah, this is just really cleaning up our ordinances to make sure everything references. We're not changing the code or anything like that.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right. This will be ordinance twenty-one sixteen. So moved by Trustee Bowden, second by Trustee Morevka.
Okay, roll call vote, Bowden?
Yes.
Morevka?
Yes.
Sluse? Jones?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Sterba?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
All right. Now onto item E, resolution approving a settlement agreement between Iroquois Farms to Hospital in the Village of Peatone. And this would be resolution twenty-one dash R O six. As you all know, we've been in negotiations to get an easement from Iroquois Farms, who are the property owners to the west of eighty-eighth Avenue. And we're close, you know, we're just hoping to get a signature. And this, we, we have this document here that we're going to hopefully approve tonight and then, you know, be able to present that to Iroquois Farms. And, you know, they agreed to sign it, but I won't believe it till I see the ink dry on there, so. But, so that's where we're at.
So verbally, they've agreed to this. This is the result of the negotiations begun, going on for several months.
Correct.
The PAC was okay with the terms of here?
Okay. Any other questions? That, we retain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Jones, second by Trustee Bowden.
Okay, roll call vote, Jones?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Sluse? Morevka?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
And Sterba?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carried.
Questions on the press?
None.
Okay. Any other correspondence, communications, additions?
I had a couple of positive comments from community members on the code book that they all put together.
The brochure?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
They're like, who put that together?
Yeah.
I would like to say me.
Me, too.
But I told him, Joe, that it, on his own initiative too, wasn't it?
We talked about it for, specifically for the, the block parties. We have something to give people and talk about, but I think it's, it's just going to be very useful all the time. So he completely did it all on his own.
He said it was very good. And the, the other comment was that maybe we should mail one of those out to all the residents in town. We'd spend a little money upfront, but we may save a lot of money in the long run by not having to follow up on mistakes or oversights that people make.
Yeah.
Good idea. Is it on the website? Is it posted on the website?
It isn't.
Can it be?
It can, yes.
Cheaper than mailing.
Yes. Exactly the fact that, that we have to pay an hourly rate for our web designer to find a place to put it, because the website's not in a framework where it can just, it goes here.
Oh.
So we, it might cost us a little bit to get it up on the website, but.
So one of Amy's goals coming up this next quarter is to get our, you know, website redesigned or at least, you know, get approved to get redesigned. So she's in the process of getting bids on doing that, because our website is, you know, is pretty old and not really very functional. And so, yeah, we're hoping to, and then, you know, stuff like this can be added quite easily, so. Anything else? If not, we retain a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then moved by Trustee Morevka, second by Trustee Sterba.
Okay, roll call vote, Morevka?
Yes.
Sterba?